Okay, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Planning and Zone Commissioning regular meeting Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. First, ask everybody to join me in prayer. Dear God, we pray that you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. In your name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And on Texas flag? On under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. God has Texas.
Okay, so we'll move on to item four, citizens' comments. I'll just, we have a number of comments tonight, so I'll just remind everybody, we have a five-minute limit. The gong will go off. If it goes off in your speaking, don't be startled. Just finish your thought so we can just efficiently get through everything. It's happened to all of us. So I'm going to start with Gina.
All right, is it on? Déjà vu, we were just here last night for three and a half, almost four hours. So I'm a little frustrated that I have to come back and say this again tonight pertaining to Oak Point. I see that it's still 385 homes on 148 some odd acres, 146 acres, and that's .44 acre a lot per house. That's unacceptable. This is the third time. I don't know what part of one acre they're not getting, but that is part of McLennan-Chism's plan, comprehensive plan. My husband and I, I will reveal my age, are in our 60s. We bought our house right over here, and it's probably our most valuable asset that we have. And we moved out here, he is a Dallas City Police Officer, to get away from all of the riffraff, away from all of the noise. Even Rockwall was too noisy and messy for us, and I'm a noisy person. I like activity. But when it comes to my home, I want privacy. I want land. I want spread out. I don't want to hear people. I sure as heck don't want to hear sports events going on over here. I sure as heck don't want to see increased sports traffic, people who don't even live here. So, Mr. Oak Point, please hear me. Revise your plan or don't come back again. And I'm going to say this also, you're a nice man. Nothing personal. Your plan is just too small for these houses. And we don't want those parks and all that. Can we have some kind of resolution that once a developer is told a specific reason why this is not passable, that the P&amp;Z will not hear you again if you're coming back with something we've already rejected? And it's a bottom-line, non-negotiable. This is a non-negotiable. So please maintain that. And any, I'd also like to see a resolution that any development that's brought to you that is under one acre is automatically said, no, doesn't fit our criteria and our comprehensive plan. And this is what our citizens want. So as a citizen, that's what I want. Please maintain our peace and our privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tony?
Tony Crawford, 104 Lavender Place in McLennan-Chism. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. First thing I wanted to just address is we have a comprehensive plan, and we, the citizens, moved here and rely on this comprehensive plan, and if the city doesn't want to follow the comprehensive plan while we have it. I'm here to make one simple request, that you, as a governing body, follow the desires of the people of this community and maintain growth outlined by this plan approved by the City Council in 2021. The main desire of the citizens of McLennan-Chism was to maintain a country estate field or our city. This document specifically talks about the Heritage Center around City Hall and states maximum density of one dwelling per one acre for residential use. When this residential and park proposal was presented to the City Council, every one of the council members all corrected Mr. Webb on the land usage and stated that it needed to be one home per one acre. There were also reservations about having the responsibility of ball fields. I have yet to talk to any resident with or without children that are wanting to have ball fields. The agreement to take care of the ball fields is with a lacrosse club in Dallas, from my understanding. They would use the ball field for tournaments on the weekends. This by itself would create huge amounts of traffic that 550 just can't handle. The residents who live on Chapel Hill behind us are concerned that traffic will constantly be driving down their dead-end street due to missing their turn into the fields. The number of homes is a problem when you factor in the average number of automobiles entering and exiting per home. That number quoted by our city planner is five, five in and out on average per day. That would mean over 1,675 cars in and out per day going past the fire station here. Again, 550 can't handle that. Mr. Webb has developed some very nice neighborhoods in the area. One just north of us is a minimum of one-acre lots. Another is just west of this location with 1.5-acre lots, and don't forget Chisholm Crossing Phase Four east of us with lots that are shy of two acres. He even built most of Chisholm Crossing Phase One, Two, and Three on lots almost two acres. So it's hard to understand why this neighborhood proposal is all high-density. The people went to the city to follow the comprehensive plan. In fact, the plan has been reduced from 1.5-acre lots to one-acre lots. County records show that Mr. Webb purchased the land in January of 2022, well after the comprehensive plan was in effect, when minimum lot sizes were 1.5 and then our correction to one acre. Where I want Mr. Webb to be successful, which in turn makes McLennan-Chism successful, I would want him to reconsider his plan if he can't make it financially work for him. The developer across the street worked with our neighborhood, Mr. Phillips, to reconsider and work with our neighborhood to build homes in line with what were already here. They are one-acre lots in this neighborhood. From my understanding, the developer actually bought that land from another developer who couldn't make the one-acre lots work. Mr. Webb has stated that he lives in the community and wants what's best for our community. That might be the sale of this land to another developer who can make one-acre lots work. So again, I request Mr. Webb work with the city and the citizens who live here to make this a great community by decreasing the density of this project. The city of McLennan-Chism is in the process of hiring an architectural firm to design the Heritage Center around City Hall. Our request that the land for the ball fields and residential development be changed to fit the comprehensive plan, which in turn will better fit with that design. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cornish, Brent?
Good evening. My name is Brent Cornish, and I live at 250 Lee Road. I live in a neighborhood that's quiet, not bright lights. A lot of us raise livestock there. It's a peaceful place to live. Actually, Ryan, over there, actually helped put one of my calves away when I was not at home one time. Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate that. And in saying so, well, we also have a quarter for commercial property, down to 205. So in saying all of this, I respectfully ask you to not allow commercial property to infringe into our neighborhood, because I feel that it'll possibly devalue the property values, plus I'll have a lit-up yard all the time. So again, please consider not allowing the commercial to impede on to the residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sandy Webb?
My name is Sandy Webb, and I live at 912 Hamilton Court. Greenbrier Homes is looking to the P&amp;Z and eventually the City Council for a planned development district on Lee Road. The land they have purchased is already zoned, part general business and part residential. The storage facility will be placed on the part-zoned commercial, and the other 15 acres would be three residential five-acre lots. New businesses are coming to McLennan-Chism. I would like to see the new businesses enhance our town as they also add to our tax revenue. Greenbrier has also done a good job to make this site aesthetically fit into our landscape of our city. This business will provide storage for our citizens who live in subdivisions that prohibit RVs and boats being parked where they are visible from the street. Thank you for your time and consideration for this new business for our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda?
I live at 1150 Frontier Trail, right, you know, off of Lee Road, and we've lived there for 20 years, and we love the neighborhood. We love McLennan-Chism. We want it to stay a neighborhood. We have no problem with the lots being residential. It's a residential area that fits in perfectly. But as my other neighbors have mentioned, it's just not a fit for a storage facility. It's not something that should be in a neighborhood that was built for residential. We're all on three, at least three acres in there, and I just don't think it fits what McLennan-Chism has said it's going to be about. If there was boutiques and stuff on the 205, that's what it's made for, just like this beautiful City Hall that was built. It's built in an area that wasn't already, you know, a neighborhood. So I would just like to say I would really appreciate if you would leave my 20 years of a wonderful place to live like it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. James?
My name's James Adcox. I live at 212 Adcox Lane, directly off of Lee Road. My brother as well is at 280 Adcox Lane, and my parents own the corner at 205 and Lee Road. We're opposed to the zoning being changed on residential property to commercial use. The city has the comprehensive plan, and a mini-storage facility we do not feel embodies that comprehensive plan. We want to maintain large lots for residential. The city has standards in which residential homes are kept to. During the time when we were building our homes, we went through several revisions in order to maintain what the city had outlined for appropriate-sized homes, you know, external conditions, having brick finishes, et cetera. So we feel that that same logic should be applied across the board, whether it's these other developments being undersized with lots, or the redevelopment of a large tract of land into smaller residential parcels. That makes sense, whereas taking residential property and converting it to commercial doesn't fit the comprehensive plan. That intersection at Lee Road and 205 is an uncontrolled intersection, and it already has limited access, and it's already a tight turn for standard-sized vehicles. Now add in 40-foot RVs, people towing trailers, boats, that are less experienced with doing so, and then trying to do so on a small road seems like a recipe for a lot of congestion and undue damage to, you know, the medians and whatnot. As for the other part of their development with wanting to have five-acre homes, that's perfect. It's residential. It fits within the neighborhood scheme. We're on board with that absolutely. Being that we also have that corner, having a mini-storage facility behind our corner makes it really undesirable to develop that and build, you know, whether it's a restaurant or, you know, office space or the different things as we're pursuing the ideas of what we want to do before, you know, bringing it to council as well. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Adriana? Did I get that right? I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Adriana. I live at 904 Hamilton Court, and I am in support of the building of the storage facility. I think that what some people don't consider also is that this is also a need for the residents of McLennan-Chism. It would keep it convenient, and not only that, but Ryan has some wonderful plans. It's very attractive, and the way that he has designed it is beautiful, and it would not make the area look any less attractive, but actually better. So not only is it convenient, but it also will bring in taxes, and our city needs to grow and to have the type of businesses that its residents also need, and we shouldn't have to drive so far away for storage. And not just that, but also the additional residences that are going to be built there as well. Again, I ask you to consider to approve that because I think it's an excellent plan. So I'm definitely in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And lastly, Judy?
Judy Moss, 525 Lee Road. Gentlemen, you know why I'm here? I've spoken several times at meetings, and I'm just going to repeat some of the things I said because I feel so strongly about it. I'm going to quote a couple of the people who have been up here. Our homes are our best asset. They're the best we have. It's where we have lived for years and years, where no one else was here, just our little community. And we want what's best for our neighborhood, not someone else. Our neighborhood is not a development. It doesn't have an HOA, but we know each other, and we consider ourselves to be a neighborhood, just like the HOAs and the developments. We gather together. We have cookouts. Our people have accepted almost all progress, but not all. But we don't complain too much about it, that this is one step too far. This storage facility will not make our area look better. On the contrary, it will make it look worse. This storage facility, or any other business at our entrance to our neighborhood, is not the right thing to do. People in our neighborhood didn't ask for a storage facility. We have land. We have people come and ask if they can put things on our storage facility, from boats to trailers to horses. And yes, I let them put it on my land because I know it's hard to live over where you don't have a place where it's forbidden. Mine is not forbidden. So our neighborhood is not the place for this storage facility. We didn't ask for it. I don't even remember seeing a survey, but our people are not the ones who asked for it in the neighborhood. Are we just not considered nice enough? Are we not the ones that keep our lawns manicured and everything, all our little flowers and everything perfect? No one wants to live next to a storage facility. Would you? Would you want a storage facility at the entrance to your area, to your development? No, I don't think so. The lights at night that would have to be on are too much. They're too much for Brent. He lives across the road. He would be in daylight 24 hours a day. What might it become? As my friend Mary Strauss, my neighbor, says, it could be anything. They could have cars stored in there. I know they want it to be perfect. I know they want it to be perfect and look beautiful, but they don't all look that way. I have never seen a storage facility that looked beautiful with all the stuff that's outside of it. It could have stolen items in it. It could have paint, perishable items that bring all kinds of animals, weapons. Even people could decide they're going to live in there for a while. I don't know. I'm just, this is outside the box, but it's a possibility at some point. Think of... If the first five acres goes into commercial, what's going to happen next door? No one wants to live there. I don't care how many trees you put up. I don't care how many plants you put up. I don't care how tall a wall you put up. Nobody wants to live next door to a storage facility, not out here. The people came here to enjoy the wide-open spaces. We don't have much of that anymore. It is quickly being gobbled up. So I think, in my mind, first five acres goes to a storage facility. Nobody wants to build next door to it. Next five acres, they're going to come and ask you, well, can we get into some kind of a commercial? Keep it on Highway 205 where it belongs. Lots of land.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate all the comments from every citizen. We certainly take everything into consideration. And just as a general reminder to the folks that are here, our process is within McLennan-Chism is we will act on three items tonight. Each of those items results in a recommendation that goes forward to council, and council will act on them. And Ms. Shelley, when will that? The 14th of November will be the meeting in which those, City Council will consider those items. So I'll just remind the audience, apologize. It is, government is a process, and we appreciate everybody being involved. Okay, and now close citizen comments and move on to item number five, approval of the minutes. Look for a motion. Getting a motion to approve minutes.
Obviously.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion concerning the minutes themselves? Any edits, additions, corrections? No? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I show that unanimous? We'll move on to item number six and start with 6.1, discussion and action regarding the request by Oak National Development LLC to change the existing planned development district on approximately 149.25 acres of land from the current zoning district classification of Planned Development District Triple Creek to a new Planned Development District Legacy Park containing 335 single-family residential lots and a city park. The Rockwall Central Appraisal District property identification numbers are 11447 and 11438. Mr. Coker, staff report, please.
So you got my original report a couple of months ago, and so I've given you a revised report where I modified my recommendation. And my recommendation originally was approval of everything they asked for. But after I really reviewed our comprehensive plan in the detail that was necessary about the park, I changed my mind. Now, I'm going to tell you that AlTura has worked with me almost weekly since the last time we met on this case to try and modify the park and do some things to make it more community-based. And I don't have anything negative to say on them. They did a good job. They did what I asked them to do. I don't like the park. I think parts of it meet the comprehensive plan for the Heritage Center requirements, but I don't think it's community-based. I still think it's much more of a regional activity center than something that is designed for the citizens of McLennan-Chism. That said, I modified my recommendation to approval of the 335 residential units, and I'll tell you why. Because our comprehensive plan in the future land use map, in that section about the Heritage Center, says we desire one-acre lots. It doesn't say we require one-acre lots. State law says that the comprehensive plan has to conform, I mean, the zoning changes have to conform with the comprehensive plan. And when the comprehensive plan says we desire but do not demand, do not require, then it provides a lot of flexibility for you all to make decisions and for the council to make decisions, but it also provides a lot of flexibility for me to make recommendations. And while I don't get to vote, I think that what I provide for you is important. And in this case, and I heard all, and I believe the citizens believe that our comprehensive plan says there aren't going to be any lots that are less than an acre in the city. Well, that's not what it says. It says that's what we desire, but historically, historically, we've allowed properties with less than an acre as long as they have off-site sanitary sewer capacity. And in this case, I'll refer you to Sonoma Verde, for instance, much smaller lots, all have off-site sanitary sewer capacity, which is owned and operated by the city. The AlTura folks in this case have 335 sewer permits that are attached to that same sewer system. And in that regard, I've recommended approval of the 335 lots on this 149 acres, but denial or disapproval of the park. And if you go with my recommendation for this case, and they're here to make their case, and I want you to listen to them, but if you recommend approval of the houses and denial of the park, then I would also ask you to recommend that they provide a revised development plan for the residential. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So I'll ask one question straight up front. To me, it was a little bit...
To me, it was a little bit hard to get past how you... You think this is a full concept, and yet we have something that you disagree with and it's something you approve. To me, it seems like we need to go back and... It just doesn't seem to compute, and you don't have things where... It's not a comprehensive outlook on how this property is being developed. And so, I just had a hard time trying to digest that piece of it.
Okay. Commissioner Breeze, what the applicant has requested, you've got a concept plan that they provided, you've got big copies of that, I think, on your desks, and it's what they're proposing. If the commission were to recommend and the council were to approve that concept, then they'd be obligated to bring us back Platts that you'd review and make recommendations on that conformed to that, to that comprehensive plan, to that concept plan that they provided. My position is that while I don't... I take no umbrage with the houses. They've got sanitary sewer off-site capacity. We've done it. It doesn't set a precedent anywhere else, but we've got the capacity, and we've allowed it when there's off-site sanitary. But a regional park does, in my mind, does not fit into the classification that it is called for. In fact, let me read it here. Anticipated land uses in the heritage center. Just the last one. Parks, trails, open space, green space, and ponds and creeks. Well, this proposal has all of that stuff, except for it's got seven big activity centers and probably a five or six acre revision, community green that's right out here behind City Hall, which I really like. I would much prefer that as a solution to the park issue, that could have access to parks and open space and trails and a pond. That would be nice. But I think having a regional activity, a sports center, that is not owned... Maybe owned by the city ultimately, operated and maintained by the city, but I don't think that that's the right thing for us, because it looks to me and frankly operates like a regional activity center. And I don't think that that's... The design is consistent with what the comprehensive plan laid out for the heritage center. I don't know if I got where you wanted to go, Mr. Breeze, but I...
You did. I understood your explanation in the first part. For me, it's a total concept that should be put forward that matches the plan, and so how can one be approved and the other one not? Just, I understand technically it can. I'm just thinking from a conceptual point of view, it seems like it would have to be a complete plan dependent.
Well, and I believe the applicant in this case submitted what they think, what they would desire to be a complete plan. Houses and the park and all the things that go with it. And when you start taking a look at what it says, parks, check. Trails, check. Open space, green space, check. Ponds, check. All of those things are contained in what they're proposing. It just doesn't feel like what the citizens of McLennan-Chisholm anticipated when they agreed with this section about the heritage center. They think it's complete. I don't think it complies with our comprehensive plan, at least on that part, because it's much more regional rather than focused on the citizens of McLennan-Chisholm.
Anything further? No, thank you. Okay.
It's raining pretty good out there. Is... Maybe you mentioned that...
Mike, Mike, you're gonna have to speak up, because I can't hear you.
There we go. Sorry about that. Anyways, is there a definition within the comprehensive plan of what the word desire means or the word required means?
There is no definition of desire, other than what it says on the page.
And so, it's just the ordinary standard definition?
That's right. Desire. Now, state law, state law, and I think I copied the state law back in the July 12th version of my report, says that changes in zoning shall, not may, shall comply with the comprehensive plan. That's state law. But when you have a comprehensive plan that provides a lot of flexibility for commissioners and for council members to make a decision about what complies or not, that's on us.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was no special definition identifying. Okay, thank you.
No, sir.
You good? No questions? I'm not gonna keep thinking it'd go that fast. So, the question I have, though, is, within the concept of the comprehensive plan, it's quite clear that small acre lots are not envisioned for this area. And that would then be discretionary... What you're suggesting is that's a discretionary judgment we have, compliant with Texas law in our recommendation back to City Council.
Is that a question?
Well, I'm just confirming that that's our... The guardrails, if you will, of our authority in our recommendation.
I agree.
Okay. So, within that context, then, if I look at Texas statute, Texas Municipal Code 211, right, that this is with a compliance with the comprehensive plan, that it must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan, that that would include seven key steps for understanding it, to include lessening congestion in streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote health and the general welfare, provide light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, and avoid undue congestion of population, or facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements. Is that... I have that correct? So, that's our...
You read it correctly.
Guideline. So, I just... The charge to council, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, to the commission, would be that's our guide for making the recommendation to City Council. Okay? All right?
Other questions?
I think we're done here. I'm gonna hand it over. Mr. Webb, you wish to make a statement?
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Jay Webb. I live in 912 Hamilton Court, McLennan-Chisholm, with Alterra Homes. I've been a resident of McLennan-Chisholm for over 20 years. Served on the P&amp;Z for 10 years. I was chairman for five years. My family lives in this area. As I mentioned in the last meeting, Alterra was founded in 1972, a home builder in Crandall, Texas. Alterra is a local builder with... Its corporate office is in McLennan-Chisholm. Several years ago, Alterra set up a resale exemption for materials as... For the receipt of McLennan-Chisholm, in other words, allowing the town to benefit from the sales tax that materials we purchase and use in other parts of North Texas. We've built and developed several subdivisions in and around McLennan-Chisholm. Alterra Homes has purchased the property around City Hall. It's proposing donating approximately 40 acres valued at $2 million to be McLennan-Chisholm's first city park. We've met with the city several times and attempted to design an neighborhood and park acceptable to the city, which complies with the spirit of the comprehensive plan. We revised our concept plan 45 times in this attempt. While this was never intended to be a regional park, our latest revision, which I just handed out, has been revised to reduce the number of playing fields from the original 13 to three lacrosse fields and four soccer fields. Seven fields are the minimum number that will produce enough field fees to pay for maintenance of the park and provide enough space for the two local kids' sports clubs that want to use them. With only three or four fields per sport, this could never be confused with a regional sports complex. Producing the number of playing fields has allowed us to increase the size of the community green across from City Hall, which would host community events with adjacent parking. The property is part of the heritage center on the comp plan, and among its anticipated uses are parks, trails, open green space, ponds, and creeks. All of these are included in our concept plan. Approximately half of Alterra's property would be parked trails and open space, including almost two miles of trails that are designed to connect to future developments. Alterra planted over 700 trees and lots in the green space. Property is being served by high point water supply and has been confirmed that it has capacity to serve this community. We believe that Legacy Park will contribute to building a sense of community in our town by providing trails that allow neighbors to meet while exercising, community pavilion and an open community green for city and community events, athletic fields, courts, ponds, fishing, provide our town's children and adults to play outside and not on their phones, and a venue for friends, family, and neighbors to picnic and get to know each other. We ask for your support or for your input.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Webb? Jay, I just have one or a couple of questions. First is, in this latest concept plan, thank you for providing the update, describe the area inside the white box there of... I assume that's City Hall and so the... How would that be modified? How would that land be modified?
The dotted square is City Hall, and you know the fire station is below that. What we're proposing is behind the existing hall to have parking, which we would put in. It would be gravel or crushed rock parking, so it could be moved easily in case the city decides to put in a different building behind. It would provide overflow parking for City Hall, plus if we have community events in the park, obviously that would be parking for that.
But if there is expansion of the City Hall complex to accommodate any future construction, public safety building or something else, then that would result... Could result in the elimination of that parking?
It could. Again, that's why it's gravel, decided to be impermeable so that you don't have water runoff. It's easily moved compared to concrete. And so, if there was something put there, then that could be moved further. I mean, the city owns it, and so it'd be up to the city what they wanted to do with it, so they can move it or replace it or do away with it.
And then, within the comprehensive... Within the comprehensive plan, anticipated land uses include associations associated with the city, county, and school district, mixed-use development, which is a combination of residential office, residential retail, entertainment, arts and culture, rural and country feel, uses related to McLennan-Chisholm's heritage and/or history or arts and culture, and/or park trails, open green space, and ponds and creeks. So, the first three elements of that equation were not incorporated into this concept, or did you consider those, or how did that work?
We considered them. We considered all of the things on the plan. My view on it is that all those things can't be included in any development, so that those were the things that were supposed to be in the area. So, residential and entertainment would be the park and the residential areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That helps the logic. And one last question is the number of homes and the size of the lots. What's the driver in your mind behind that? What's your...
Well, the reason is, the reason that one acre would not work for this is we can't give too many million dollars of land to the city and support that with one acre lots in this tract. And so, our concept was to give the city a park, which we thought would be good for the city forever. And it's gonna be increasingly hard as the city develops to be able to get a big piece of land that anybody can afford to use for a park. And so, we saw this as an opportunity to do that. But we need enough rooftops to be able to pay for that $2 million plus to obviously develop subdivision. And so, that's the reason. Our original plan called for 80-foot wide lots and 60-foot wide lots. And after meeting with council members, they asked us to change it to 80-foot and 70-foot, which is what's on your plan now.
All right. Thank you. I want to turn to Mr. Coker now, and thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
And I just want to, for the record, I just want to say, you have done, been a great partner with the city and done a number of beautiful homes, both number of developments. And anybody knows me, I live in one of the homes you've constructed, so... And we're very happy in that home, so very well-built home. So, any decisions made tonight, I think, are just based on how this commission is interpreting the will of the people and how that's going, that was the recommendations made to council. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So, I think Marpa's leading me down this route. Let's say the city does decide to reuse that land that you now have for a parking lot. And let's say that what you're developing is not a regional center. Where's the parking taken until again? I mean, we're gonna have this nice brick park, all these activities take place, you can park on 1550.
Right. Well, we could put parking in the park now. The land's not being used, so it made sense to us to develop the park to its fullest extent, if you can develop a park to its fullest extent. And the city would have the option of what to do when the future came. If the city needs all of that property for buildings, then you would move the parking into part of the park.
Okay. So, now, let's continue this trail of logic. You said you needed seven fields to maintain profitability, to maintain the park itself.
If the park...
Then now, the city's gonna have...
Right. And that would be a...[1613.83][1613.83][music] That would be a decision for the city to make at that time. Again, it belongs to the city. The park belongs to the city, and so does obviously this property. The seven fields, that's to support taking care of the entire park. We tried to come up with something that would not be a financial burden to the city, would not increase taxes. And so, the park, the athletic fields do that. They provide the maintenance. Actually, the city will probably make money off of it. But below seven fields, the two local clubs won't take on that. And so, then you'd have to go to maintenance of the park being on the city.
So, if parking did have to take place inside the park, and what free space was left was not sufficient for parking, and a field had to be taken and consumed to provide additional parking, we wouldn't even have a lacrosse team coming in to maintain that?
When would you have what?
The two teams you're talking about coming in from Dallas that would help pay for this...
They're Rockwall.
Or Rockwall, wherever it may be. They would not... This would not be a facility that they could use at that time without them, because we would have less than seven fields. That's what I heard you say.
Yeah. There's three... What we're showing is three lacrosse fields and four soccer fields. And we talked to two clubs that are local, and they would have a minimum... Soccer team has a minimum of four fields they would need, and the lacrosse team has a minimum of three. And they would be willing to pay enough money to maintain fertilized mow, water a little bit, the rest of the fields, and the rest of the park also. As an alternative sometime in the future or now, if the city determined to do it, they could not go that route, maintain the fields themselves, put the parking away of the fields completely if they chose to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got a question on that. You just mentioned that this... These teams would be paying for this and that there's some sort of arrangement. Could you describe what that arrangement is? Is there some kind of contract?
There's contract. There's... It's done two ways, as I understand. I'm not a soccer expert, but as I understand, some clubs will just take over the maintenance of the field, and then they have the use of the fields, and they will do all the maintenance. Others, you can charge the club for using the fields and bring in enough money to maintain the fields. And we have talked to them, we put the figures, I don't have them with me, but we have the figures that actually show the city making money doing that. But it should certainly cover the maintenance of the park.
And, and so you envision that the city of McLean and Chism would be negotiating with these soccer clubs to do that going forward in the future?
My understanding is what most cities do, small cities, they will have a volunteer park board of two or three people, and they handle that, with people that are on board with parks.
So that McLean and Chism would be responsible in perpetuity for these parks, that someone may or may not be paying for, but we'll just have to assume that someone's going to do it?
That's, I think, true of all city parks, yes.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with that, but the, the difference here is that we're talking about a specific ball field that we're hoping someone wants to use, and if they don't want to use it, then a hundred percent of those costs are on the city for the maintenance, as well as insurance, and all the other stuff that go along with it.
That's true, the, but the fact is that they're, they're sending in line for fields, they're desperate for fields. They use, the school fields now, if there's school activity, they get canceled, their games get canceled. Most of the people here, players, drive to Louisville, places like that, because there's no parks between here and there, to speak of. And so there's a great demand for parks, I don't think that will be a problem. But yes, to answer your question, any city parks, we're talking about a city, is it a city's responsibility?
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just add, Jay, on that one point. So, in this, I've talked to three separate parks and recs folks in the, in the area, and in general, their view, I mean, I'm only going on what they were, I was told to include, this includes Rockwall, that only about ten percent of the total cost of operation is recovered through fees for athletic field uses. Now, again, I don't, I don't know their structure, their management structure, their, how they do that, and what their fee structure is, I mean, that's all, I was just trying to get a sense of general, a general understanding of, because I, candidly, I do, I share concern about either, either fields that we're maintaining fields that really are going to be utilized predominantly by clubs, so the city is taking care of club fields, if you will, or they become more, you know, more of my concern, having grown up in a urban area, where I've watched athletic fields really fall into deterioration because of the lack of, lack of use and lack of resources the city could put into them, become a little bit of a blight. And I, I, obviously, we don't want to have that happen here, so.
I can get it. I don't have it.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Okay. I, I do, I do appreciate, I know you're sincere about this, and you're, you know, you're gung-ho, I just, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about ten years from now, and when, when we're all, you, both of you and I are a little bit older and a little bit grayer, how that plays out.
I think over a year, you know.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Coker, there was some reference several times to agreements that have been made with the city. Can you illuminate that discussion to us?
I can. The applicants in this case have shown us letters of intent from two clubs, one, one lacrosse club and one soccer club, I think was what it was, that showed their intention to basically lease these and take over the management operations and maintenance of the, of the facilities that they were going to be responsible for. My, my concern, much like the commission's concern so far, is what happens if that doesn't come to fruition? Well, I know what happens, because parks are funded out of the general fund, and that means that you either move money from something that's important, fire department, to park maintenance, if that happened. And my concern is that we, we being the city are not, and remember, I'm a consultant that works here. While I'm your city planner, I don't live here, but I am concerned about these three things, in addition to the fact that I think it's a regional facility. Operations, and one of you talked about insurance, I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Operations is a big deal, there's mowing, trimming, maintenance, when it floods, getting the water off it, when it's drought, adding the extra water to it. Then there's, there's maintenance itself, the real maintenance, you know? How do you keep it ready for teams to play on, on a regular basis? And the last thing is the management of it. If it's a city park, we can lease it to the soccer club of Dallas. We can do that. But we still have to have somebody who's going to oversee that contract, who's responsible for the management of it. We're a little bitty town. Now, I know we're, we're getting bigger by the day, but we're still a little bitty town, and, and I don't think it's in, it's not in my purview to recommend to the commission something that I think might be a liability rather than an asset, and that's where I'm at on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Coker. The, as I was reading through the Heritage Center, I was trying to see what was not just the spirit, but the letter of what was the desire for the Heritage Center. And according to what we've already heard tonight, for institutional uses, city schools, use for the community, even mixed-use development, combination residential office, restaurant, retail, some entertainment, as I read down through there, there is a qualification with the rural and country feel.
Yes, sir.
Do we feel we've met that? Do we feel we're, we're even close to what we're trying to get to here for, for the Heritage Center?
Well, well, let me say this, that the Heritage Center designation is not a hundred and forty acres, it's about a thousand acres. And there's, and there's a bunch of it that doesn't have anything to do with these guys. There's a big school district property that is down the road from us, there is a bunch of other land that sits inside this Heritage Center, and I think that the concept here is so, at the end of the day, we have all these pieces-
Gotcha.
-in the, in the Heritage Center, not necessarily all these pieces on a hundred and forty-eight acres around City Hall.
Sure, I appreciate that. Let me back up then and say, minus all of those pieces, even the residential, do we feel like this meets the one qualification with a rural country feel right up here against the City Hall?
I'm glad you asked me that question, because I'm not the person who's going to make that decision.
Sure, sure. It's not supposed to put you in, in a corner, it's not supposed to.
Yes, it was, and I'm okay with that. I'm just not going to answer.
There you go, very good.
Okay, if there aren't any further-
I got a quick question over here.
Yes, sir.
One of the commenters mentioned, I think it was five in-and-outs for traffic a day or something along those lines. And just looking at the way that these ingress and egress is presented, it looks like there's only really two ways coming in and leaving. Has there been any traffic studies or anything associated with this, or is there any issues with respect to traffic?
Mike Coker answered that question. First of all, the, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, who is the group that publishes trip generation numbers for, in this case, single-family residences that are less than an acre, says that you should anticipate that each lot is going to produce nine-point-six-nine trips per day, nine-point-six-nine trips per day. Now, that's, half of the trips are in, and half of the trips are coming back. So, that's the deal. When I did the math on this, it adds, and you, and you meter that out over twenty-five percent of it in rush hour in the morning, twenty-five percent coming back in the evening, and the other fifty percent is spread out over the course of twenty-four hours. Not a problem with our transportation system to handle that. The code, the fire code requires that they have two points of entry and two points of exit, if they have over thirty lots. Well, they got three hundred and thirty-five lots, so they have to have two points of ingress and egress. And I do, I do not think that it's going to create a traffic problem on five fifty, because right now, the last traffic count I did on five fifty was about fifteen hundred trips a day, and the capacity of it is about six thousand. No, sixteen, sixteen thousand.
And, and is proximity to the fire department, that's not of concern?
No, the fire department's access, entry is on our main driveway, and exit is lighted, and it's got signs to stop traffic, so there shouldn't be any problem with them exiting on, on runs with traffic on five fifty. Additionally, additionally, five fifty is, is recommended to be widened, now I'm not going to see it. In fact, Mike Easter's not going to see it either. But, but it's scheduled to be widened, and when we are getting plats, I gain, gain access, I got property from the property across the street for the widening of five fifty. When we did City Hall, I got property for the widening of five fifty, to go from a sixty-foot right-of-way, which is what we have today, up to a minimum of eighty, but pushing a hundred, for a maximum width in a traffic surface of forty-eight pave feet in that. Right, today, it's, it's about twenty-eight feet. So we've got the capacity for the trips that are there now, and for the anticipated trips we have up until the point in time when the trilogy project comes to fruition.
What, um, when, what year was your last traffic study for FM five fifty?
I got the numbers from Techstat, and it's been two years ago.
Thank you. Everybody good?
Good.
Good. I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council to deny the applicant's request for a zoning change from PD Triple Creek to PD Legacy Park. Seconded.
Okay. Have a motion and second, any, any further discussion? Any comments, any discussion? Um, I'll just add my thoughts in there, though. My, my primary concerns are, and as I go back to what, as we're acting on zoning considerations and the concept, so our ordinance requires a concept plan to be delivered when we zone. In this case, the concept plan is delivered, although the recommendation is mixed, from recommendation from staff, so I would prefer to see a clean concept that turns, is able to, that everybody's in agreement with staff, and that we can act on, because zoning, unlike plating, where we can have stipulations, with zoning, in discussion with city attorney is, it's much easier and better for the city long-term to have a clean zoning consideration. So I'll just, I'll just add that as a, a point. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, and I'll just do what's important, so I'm just going to do a roll call, vote, it's right down the line. You're voting yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, so, and yes, so show a unanimous recommendation to deny to council. Sir.
Mr. Chairman, is this a denial with or without prejudice?
Uh, without.
Without.
Right. Like, I want to make sure I get, I want to leave the opportunity for the applicant to-
Refile.
Refine it and, and come back.
Yeah, and, and for the, for the commission's edification, the difference between a recommendation, recommendation of denial, it's the equivalent of a dec-, a definition of recommendation for denial with prejudice. If it's with prejudice, the applicant may not petition the city for a change in zoning on the same property for an additional three hundred and sixty-five days. But when it's without prejudice, then if, if the council does the same thing, and they wanted to modify it, then they could come back with a modified concept next month.
All right, thank you. All right, and we will now move on to the next agenda item. Item six dot two, which is discussion and action regarding request by Green buyer Homes to change the existing SF two-point-five single-family zoning district, requiring a minimum lot size of two and one-half acres, and a GB business zoning district on approximately twenty acres of land to a mixed-use, mixed-use plan development district, providing for three five-acre single-family residential lots, and one five-acre lot for a mini warehouse facility. This property is generally fronts Lee Road, east of the intersection of Lee Road and State Highway two oh five. The Rockwell County Central Appraisal District property identification numbers are one-one-four-zero-four, one-one-four-zero-eight, and one-one-four-one-seven. Mr. Coker, staff report, please.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, I think you have a copy of my report. I apologize for getting to you today. The last few weeks has been hectic for me, and so I will do better on getting reports to you sooner. But the, the staff's recommendation is for approval, however, the approval is, is pretty specific about what I would anticipate. What I've asked you to consider, as compared to what they're requesting, is a plan development district that provides for two and a half acre lots. The current zoning is SF two-point-five, which allows two and a half acre lots. However, our zoning ordinance for SF two oh, uh, two-point-five requires a minimum street frontage of three hundred feet. The conferencing plan recommends that we modify that to a hundred and fifty feet, and so the, the way that we can get to a hundred and fifty feet from three hundred feet and still keep the two and a half acre minimum lot size, is to have a plan development district specify what the street frontage is required. I recommended a hundred and fifty feet rather than the three hundred feet that they're asking, because the standard is three hundred feet of street frontage for each, each lot, each residential lot. His actual, his application allows for that, but in a modification that he asked me about within the last few days, and it's in your packet with the development standards, he wanted to be the, have the ability to reduce one or two of the lots to two and a half acres, which would end up being more lots than the three, three, five acre lots. It makes sense to me to, to let him have the ability to do two and a half acre lots. Conference of plan also says, on the future land use plan, if you look at my report, I don't know if it came to you in color of it, but the area where he's acquired the property, on the future land use map, it shows it to be agricultural. So if you, if you want to conform to the conferencing plan, when you're thinking about changing zoning, then what you should be doing is thinking about what's going to comply. And what would comply in that case is ag zoning. Now, why is ag zoning important? Well, our code, ag zoning, agricultural zoning, allows for a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. So you could actually give him what I think he needs to have, and provide the flexibility, if you allowed him to have a plan development district, changing the residential component, all of that residential land, so it's, it's not the whole twenty acres, but it's more than fifteen acres, to two and a half acre lots, by reducing the frontage from three hundred linear feet to a hundred and fifty feet. Do the simple math, boom, 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 you get six lots. Now, that takes me back to the general business district. I've also recommended approval, but not of a change in zoning on that property. I've recommended that you basically keep it as general business, but allow an additional use, that being the additional use is a self-storage, any warehouse use, subject to a number of qualifications. An eight-foot masonry wall, adjacent to anything that is a residentially zoned district, landscape buffer, screening between the existing general business uses that are along two oh five and this property. Now, let me talk about this property. The piece that I'm talking about is currently zoned general business. And I put in your packet the definition of our zoning ordinance on what GB adjacent to two oh five looks like. And it's three hundred and fifty feet from the center line, from the center line of two oh five. And so if you measure, now I believe that Mark did this, but I'm going to take a cut at it, the distance- at it, the distance between the center line and the back of the Adcox property, which is the corner piece at 205 and Lee, is two and a quarter, 225 maybe, which would leave, 225, okay, 228, 228, which would leave 122 feet. We have a section in our code that says mini warehouse requires a maximum frontage, maximum, no, a minimum frontage of 100 feet. Yeah, maybe it says maximum, I can't remember. But all of a sudden, he's got enough general business zoning already to allow for a use that is allowed, if you just kept it general business, you can ask for a SUP for a mini warehouse on general business, subject to landscaping. And one of the things I've put into this is compliance with our landscaping requirements, substantial landscaping, so that the integration is a transition from the existing businesses on 205 through a storage facility into larger lot, single-family residential, with an eight-foot masonry wall that would be the sides to the commercial, to the residential properties. That said, I think it may be an appropriate transitional use. I've recommended approval for you on that, subject to compliance with the standards that we have in our ordinance and that it doesn't exceed the existing general business zoning district location. And one of the things I've asked, if you say yes, is that the applicant be required to get a registered professional land surveyor to tell us exactly where that 350-foot line ends up on the east side of 205. Because right now, it's just a Google map, or if my CAD operator is there, she gets pretty close, but I didn't have her available. So 228. Questions?
Commission? Questions? I'll start down at this, and I know Mr. Freeze has got something in his mind. You good, sir? Anything? Now, I'm coming back down. So I'll give you a break here and you can come back to it. So the question I have is on the general purpose commercial area.
General business.
General business, I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction. So general business was, so there's a section of the first lot that's already zoned that way, a piece of it.
That's correct.
Roughly 110-ish or 20 feet, thereabout, right?
More than 100.
More than 100, yes. I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm just trying to get it conceptually in my head. And so that area is already zoned, is existing zoning, so that section would only be an action to reduce within that existing 350-foot offset.
That's correct. Except, and that general business zoning district, when you take a look at Section 3.1 of our zoning ordinance and it tells you what the uses are, it's a long list of allowed uses.
Oh, yeah.
There are a number of uses. And mini warehouse is one of them that requires an SUP. An SUP is a specific use permit.
Right.
It has to go through the same process that a zoning change does, because what it would be, if the commission recommended and the council agreed, the addition of a use to an underlying, in this case, general zoning district. But there's a whole lot of other uses that are allowed, I'm going to use the term by right, because they don't have to ask for any special permission, all they got to do is go get a building permit.
Right, right. And so I'm just, so the special use permit is still a requirement for, if we grant zoning, then there would still be a requirement for a special use permit for that activity based on our ordinance? Am I correct on that?
Let me specify, if you adopt the Plan Development District, then you would be adopting this as an additional use in the GB, in the general business zoning district, subject to the conditions that I put into your docket, and that is eight-foot masonry wall, landscape screening, compliance with Section 6-1 and Section 6-3 in our landscaping ordinance. I mean, it's pretty rigorous if you said yes and the council said yes. He's still got to do exactly what he would have had to do if he applied for an SUP.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeze. Did you have?
So taking it all in, I would make a motion to table this until the following meeting next month. We received, not, maybe Mr. Coker, the report had come out until the 24th, and it would have already been scheduled in for the September meeting. And that would give at least myself and maybe potential other council, commission members a chance to take in the changes that have been made since the last time this matter was brought before the commission. Okay.
The changes that have been made have not been made by Mr. Webb. They're my recommendations. Those are the changes.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes. Just trying to absorb those changes.
No, and I apologize, so I want to let Mr. Webb, if you care, make any comments.
I'd like to thank those who spoke in favor earlier. I appreciate that, appreciate you coming. I also appreciate those who voiced their opinion in opposition. I'm trying to point out tonight some of the maybe concerns and misconceptions that were had in the public hearing from the last meeting we had a month ago. And Mr. Coker pointed out one of the biggest ones. If, Mrs. Green, if you could put it to the other file that I've sent you for a second. There's two on there, yeah. There you go, yeah. Second one there. Yes, ma'am, thank you. That's a zoomed-in section of the city zoning map. I've outlined the lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 with red, that red rectangle being the Lot 1 and discussion of the self-storage lot and the other three lots being residential. As y'all know, that may know, the long red strip is the 205 forward or commercial zoning, the general business district. And so as this zoning map shows, that Lot 1 is fairly completely in the general business zoning district already. It is a commercial property already, which I think was a misconception or misunderstood by several citizens' concerns that they were seeing me coming in and trying to put commercial on a residential property, and I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to use this property that I bought with this intention, with this information from the city, to do a mixed-use development. A plan development is for mixed uses of residential and commercial properties combined. And so when I bought this property, knowing that this was y'all's zoning map, I saw that this had that opportunity for me to do that. So I just think that that's a clear understanding now. I hope that, I'm not asking to change residential to a commercial property. I'm asking to have a commercial property and residential property that I own be approved for a plan development to allow me to use both uses.
I, so I'm going to just give you a feedback. I'm at 30 years in doing mapping in the Air Force, so I'm pretty good at working good stuff. I'm not sure about the accuracy of that map. I'm not disagreeing that a section of that first lot is clearly in the GB, in the general business.
Mr. Coker? If I can respond?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sorry, I'm sorry if I interrupted. I believe there is a section in the regulations that says that you can extend the side property line of a zoning over up to, I believe, 100 feet with, except with approval.
Well, that provision is that I have the authority to extend the GB up to an additional 100 feet beyond the 350 if the next property line is within 100 feet of the 350 from the center line of the street. That's not the case in this case. It's not that way.
Okay. Well, I would point out that in this zoning map, if you look at the property across the street from Lot 1, it's where that ginormous antenna is, everybody I'm sure is familiar with. That's a commercial property, correct? Its property line is basically the backside of that general business district according to y'all's zoning map, and that's where my Lot 1 basically lines up with, and that was the intent. Again, I'm trying to follow y'all's zoning map, and according to it, that commercial property, Lot 1, is directly across the street. I did not want a commercial property directly across the street from a residential property. It's not, it's not what I'm trying to do. Lot 2 and Lot 3 will face the property owner across the streets, first house in that street. But that this commercial property has commercial across the street from it, has commercial all along one side of it, has commercial behind it, and the only residential that touches this property is the property I own.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Coker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to say that our zoning map, there's a disclaimer on the bottom of it that says, "Don't be using this for any planning or engineering purposes," because it is just a general location. And that's why in my recommendation for your consideration, because I'm recommending approval of the mini warehouse as long as it's contained in the current general business zoning district. And in order to validate that, I've recommended that, should you agree with me, that Ryan needs to hire an RPLS to tell me where it is on the ground, where that real number is, where the 350 ends up in his Lot 1. Because I don't think it goes all the way to the eastern side of his proposed Lot 1. I think it goes somewhere in between the Adcox property, which is the corner lot, and where his first lot line would be located, which I don't think is consistent with the red on this map.
Yeah, I think that's the, unfortunately, I agree with Mr. Coker on that point.
No, that's fortunate.
Fortunately for the applicant, fortunately for Mr. Coker.
Mr. Coker, did you, are you advising that that survey be conducted prior to us acting on this? Is that what your request is?
No, sir. I'm requesting that if you recommend approval, that prior to an ordinance being adopted, so it would go on to the council with the recommendation for approval from you all, subject to compliance with that section, you'd have to have that before the ordinance was adopted, and that would, in my mind, would be a two-step process. You'd make a recommendation to the council, the council would have a public hearing and maybe take action and then bring the ordinance back if Mr. Webb has not gotten that RPLS designation of where that's going to be.
Also, we have requirements, we're talking about the SUP, which is standing for storage of, we have, we define planning controls now, we have options for tools that include fire marshal, all of the specific ones.
Well, the standards for mini warehouse are in Section 3.2 of the zoning ordinance. It's Item 17, and it talks about specifics as it relates to mini warehouse. But then everything else in there are landscaping, site planning requirements, the plan reviews by your engineer, your planner, the fire marshal's office. All of that stuff has to be done coincident with either the plat, which he'd have to do if he's going to, because this right now is unplated property. If he wanted to get a building permit, he's got to plat it, and then we do the review then for that as well. One of the things we require, and he's already talked about it, is water supply. In order for him to get a plat, a final plat, he has to be able to prove up that he has the ability to have potable water to all of the potential users and that there is fire flow, which is the requirements to pressurize the equipment that the fire department uses off the water lines. So that's all required prior to a final plat being adopted.
Any other questions for Mr. Webb? I do want to follow up on one point here, Ryan, is the recommendations Mr. Coker made, have you had a chance to review those?
Yes, I have. He did send them to me, and I would be fine agreeing to those. Those did add several costs to what it would cost to do the project, and I know that that's what it takes, I will do it.
Okay, so what, does this, his recommendations significantly change your concept plan?
No, the file before that was the concept plan. It shows the four lots. I mean, if, I wanted the residential lots to stay five acres, but had the option to break them up into 2.5. So if we kept them five acres, I wouldn't change the concept plan.
Yeah, I'm going to be completely honest, I'm a little confused on exactly what zoning action we're taking at this point.
This sort of brings my point of, I thought of you coming in, what was going on, and then, sorry, Mr. Coker, I got very lost with you. So.
I'm not going to apologize. But I will explain what I'm asking you to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay. What I'm asking the commission to do is to approve a Plan Development District that does basically two things. It provides compliance with the comprehensive plan by zoning the residential component of his Plan Development District to a standard that's equal to agricultural zoning, because the comp plan says this is supposed to be agriculture. Even the part that's currently retail on 205, it shows how to be agricultural. So my recommendation, because it changes zoning, kicks in the comprehensive plan, is giving the equivalent of agricultural zoning, subject to the agricultural zoning design and development standards, but reduce the required street frontage in that residential section from 300 feet to 150 feet, which is what with our comp plan recommends. So he can then do either three lots or six lots along the main roadway. And all he has to do is give us a plat that does that. Secondly, I'm recommending that you approve his Plan Development District to allow for an additional use in the general business zoning district that he has. The Plan Development District is subplanting the requirement for an SUP, because he would be required to do what we're doing right now if he just made an application for an SUP rather than a Plan Development District. Same process. So what I'm recommending is that you approve the additional use, subject to the conditions that I have recommended. They're different than what he's recommended. He wanted a six-foot non-masonry wall. Well, I want an eight-foot masonry wall on any place that it is co-terminus with a residential zoning district. I want a site plan that conforms with the site plan requirements of our zoning ordinance. I want a landscape plan that in addition to the eight feet and the required separation and buffering between the existing retail along 25, because there's a big tree area that runs along that fence line back there. So it would be pretty easy for him to give me a pretty good screening buffer with resident, with plants and some fencing. But on the residential side, eight-foot masonry wall. And what the Section 17 of Section 3.2 says that it should be a six-foot masonry wall, but I think it should be an eight-foot masonry wall, because the tops of the storage units generally top up above 10 feet. of the storage units generally top up above ten feet, do they not?
No, most of these units would actually be an eight-foot wall. And so if you're talking about the pitch of the roof, then it'd be about nine foot, nine and a half, I guess.
Okay, and that's why I'm suggesting, if you have eight feet and you're on the residential side, let's say you've got a, a lot that's a hundred and fifty feet wide and you put your house in the middle of that, and you're looking to the west, which would be against his eastern wall, you're going to see an eight-foot basically landscape strip because if it's my house, I'm going to landscape that on my side. So that it's just a wall and I don't have to see the tops of his, his storage units, his buffer. And you do the same thing on the other side. He's got a design which needs to be beefed up for the front, front of the property, and I think on the back side, he's got some landscaping that he's proposing as well. And I'd want to see substantially more landscaping on the periphery, all around the outside of his property. And that's what I'm recommending, should the commission recommend approval. So it's really, it's, there's a lot of status quo here, but in order to do some of the things that I think we need to do in order to comply with the comprehensive plan, we don't change the, the GB zoning, we just give him an additional use, and we require that he comply with the landscaping and site plan requirements. And on the residential side, he's got SF two point five, which allows two and a half acre lots, but it also requires a minimum three hundred foot frontage. Now, he's got three hundred foot frontages on his three lots, you know, at five acres. And at five acres and one foot, he doesn't have to plat. But if he's going to do less than five acres, he's going to, and I'm, I'm suggesting that two and a half makes good sense. But our comprehensive plan says that we should amend our zoning ordinance. We haven't got there yet. I'm working on it, but, but amend the required front footage to be reduced from three hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet for residential lots. And that's why I'm recommending that as a function of the plan development district. One other comment. Some of you are probably thinking about Board of Adjustment, because the Board of Adjustment has the authority to vary requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, I mean, somebody could come, if, if it was Mr. Webb, come to the Board of Adjustment and say, "We've got a odd-shaped piece of property, or it's got too much slope," or something like that, that was a real hardship, and we can't do three hundred foot lots. We need to have a hundred and eighty foot lots," or something like that. And they would be able to take that into account. But this is raw land, it's never been platted, it's not developed. So he doesn't have a hardship. It's a design standard now, and what I'm recommending is something that is consistent with the comp plan for the residential side and does not change the underlying zoning. Let's call it Track One. Keeps it as general business, but it allows an additional land use with some enhanced landscaping and site plan requirements. Did I get there?
Um, sorry, do you have any other comments you want to make?
Just that, I accept, I'm, I'm willing to go along with his recommendations that add to mine. This is, again, a planned development district, which is supposed to give flexibility to the commission to, to deal with the mixed use of commercial and residential plots together.
So I'll tell you where I am, having listened to all this, is that when I read the ordinance, reread the ordinance, reread the comprehensive plan, reread state law, our PD, PD Plan Development District ordinance has a firm requirement in it that, "Concept and development plan in establishing a plan development district, the city council shall approve and file as part of an amending ordinance appropriate plans and standards for each of the planned development districts. During a review, the plan, during a review and public hearing process, the city council shall require a comprehensive, a concept plan and development plan and/or detailed site plan." So it's a, it's a shaft statement, there's no getting around that. And conceptually, what we have in front of us is not meet those standards, doesn't meet the standards of all the elements. It could, I mean, you know, it sounds like you two could come together and have that and present the comp, the full package to us, but right now, it's, we're, we're going to approve a zoning based on a number of stipulations that then has to be tracked, and, and we don't deliver a clean package to council. And I, that's something I'm opposed to do because what we're doing is we're just presenting council, let them, you know, the mess, if you will, and, and let them sort it out. I'm just, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that, my, from my position. So that's, that's where I stand right now. So, I mean, any reaction?
I did turn in a development plan and site plan with the concept plan. So I, I did turn in all three.
I mean, so we can either act on yours or we, the problem I have right now is, we have your, we can act on your plan. We have Mr. Coker's recommendation for modification. So just tell us what we're doing here, if you want, if you want to go down that path. Or do you want, would you prefer to have, I know this adds time, but would you prefer the opportunity to come together, Commissioner Freeze suggested, and potentially come together and rectify that?
And, and Mr. Chairman, I am happy to work with Mr. Webb to come up with a revised concept plan and, and data points within that, that satisfy all the things that I have recommended for your consideration, and he's agreed to, to those recommendations. So if he's amenable to that, to that, if you could hold action under advisement for, let's say, a month and give us the opportunity to work together without revised.
We can, we can.
Plan, would that work?
I think we have the authority to table it. The attorney's not here, so, um.
You table it, I don't want the Agrats to, 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 so you table it, um, council, um, council, um, you want, you know, they're, 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 how about if you're willing to?
Well, it wouldn't be, I mean, that would be normal process anyway. But, um.
I, I.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I think one thing that, that we are overlooking, and, and, and I'm prepared to, to make a motion on this, but we are overlooking in our considerations, we're talking about redoing this, and the public opposition, whether it's at this meeting or whether it will be at the next meeting, is in regard to the mini warehouse. And I didn't hear anything, if we delay it, we're just going to redo the plan, but we're not going to eliminate the mini warehouse. And so we're going to be stuck right back where we are now. We need to, I think, in, in my opinion, we need to either approve or disapprove, and we can do it without prejudice to give the gentleman an opportunity to come back with a different situation that, that does not, that does not have the public opposition of the mini warehouse, that he can still utilize his, his area. I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling it, and, and I'm, but I'm in favor of us making a decision this evening based on what we have and based on, on the things that, that the public has indicated to us. I don't think we've mentioned any, any, any of that in any of this discussion, and that seems to me paramount as to what we need to decide on.
So I have a question to make sure I understood, Mr. Coker. So in doing your plan, we would still have to sidestep a current standing ordinance, even though in the comprehensive plan, we're saying we want to change it, the ordinance is as it is today? Did I understand you correctly?
If you adopt a PD that supersedes the requirement for an SGP, then that would be, if the council agreed with you, that would, that would take the place of the SGP requirement. That would be your replacement. I think that's what you're asking me. It's not sidestepping, it's replacing.
But I, I, I think that the issue Mr. Freeze brings up, and I, I agree with him is, I believe I agree with him, is that the, your recommended action is to address this as a agricultural zone. And GB, not as a PD. But if we deal with it, deal with it as a PD, there's certain stipulations that have to be accomplished. That's, I'm, I'm having difficulty bringing those two points together.
To me, it doesn't matter what, what we call it, we still have the situation of the public opposition to the mini warehouse, whether it's, whatever, whatever zone you call it, or whatever, wherever you want to, whatever you want to call it.
Can I, can I speak to that?
You still have the public opposition to the mini warehouse. Would your, would your next plan, if we went to the, if we went to Ag or we went to any of the other possibilities, say, either Mr. Coker or one of the commissioners, commissioners mentioned, would that eliminate your desire to put in the mini warehouse? Or would you come back with the same lots or, or two and a half acre lots, and on Lot One, still have the mini warehouse even though now it's zoned agriculture?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Coker's idea was to keep the general business section, general business, not to make it all agriculture. But I would also, as you've asked a couple of times about the citizen opposition, there was also citizen approval tonight, and so I think that voice should be heard as well. And, but I, I have several, several items outlined I was ready to discuss on the citizens' concern that were brought up at the hearing, but we had, we're kind of skipped that and went straight into this discussion.
In, in counting, oppose and in favor, I had three recognized, four, and I counted five, six, seven, eight, nine against.
I believe tonight.
Of the people, of the people here.
Tonight, I heard two people approve and four disapprove.
Well, it's still double, so.
But I didn't think this was the citizens' vote by approval.
Well, in, it's not the citizens' vote. We, as a council or as a commission, need to take into consideration, according to our attorney, a number of factors, and one of those factors, according to our attorney, that we can take into consideration on either approval or denial is public opposition. And also, in Section Two One One Point Zero Zero Four of our Code of Ordinance, Chapter Ten, which is the subdivision, uh, chapter, Items One, Two, Three, and Six are detrimental. I, okay, I'll read them to you. Lessen congestion in the streets. Your mini warehouse would increase congestion. In looking at it, I can see how, okay? One of the gentlemen or one of the residents said, you know, the forty-foot older homes or the, or, or anything like that. So that, that's an item one. Number two, security from safety, fire, panic, or other, other dangers. That was also brought up. Item three, promote health and general welfare. Well, health and general welfare, I see as a problem. And then, uh, number six, avoid undue concentration of population. And again, the mini warehouse contributes negatively to those four, in my opinion.
I, I would, I'm sorry, I would just disagree that that's not the way I would interpret those ordinances. The traffic flow would not be greatly increased, it would not be detrimental. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the list in front of me, but the last one you mentioned was it would increase population density was number six?
Uh, number six was avoid an undue concentration of population with all the traffic coming in and out.
Right, so, yeah, the average customer of a self-storage facility maybe visits that facility once every couple of months.
How many, how many units are in your mini warehouse?
Well, it, it's probably around two to three hundred. And so that's, that's only a couple of people that visit every month, if you, if you add on that. And that's nothing compared to what the road gets right now. And as far as the thoroughfare plan, it is a minor artery, artery of, of the city.
I mean, I, I understand your, your, your position and, but again, there's, there's so much public opposition.
I, I tried to say at the beginning, I was going to address the concerns that had been mentioned, and then we went past that, and so I never got a chance to. I think I said the first one that was the biggest issue was, the main concern was, most people thought this was all residential zoning, and that's just not the case. It's been proven that part of this property is already commercial. And so that concern has been addressed. It's not, it's, it, it's not the case.
So, so why don't I go with the SGP instead of trying to change the, the zoning?
Well, I talked to Mr. Coker when I was purchasing the property. We discussed the options on how to proceed. We, we looked at the zoning map, it showed that the property was part commercial, part residential, and I wanted to develop both. And a plan development district is the only zoning district option to do that. And so a plan development district gives the flexibility for y'all to work with the developer on lots that have different zoning in the same development. I think it's quite clear that that's the only way to develop all of this together. And so that, that, that's why.
Yeah, I think that one of the obvious things here is that nobody's disputing that there's an existing general business zone that extends three hundred and fifty feet from the center line of State Highway Two Oh Five. The question really now is how far that extends into, beyond the existing property line, the property that's there on the corner and then extends into the next lot. And what I believe you're asking for is a continuation, a push of that general business will be extended out some number of feet, whatever it is, a hundred and something feet, that would then extend that down, commercial down Lead Road, which is, I think, what we've heard opposition to.
It would still not, if I, if I may, it would, it would not touch one other residential property other than my own, which was one of the concerns.
That's not the issue, I don't think that's the issue, though.
Well, it was brought up by a citizen, that I was putting commercial in their backyard, and that is not the case.
Fair, I mean, I, I, folks are entitled to have their opinion, and they, and they express them. We're, we're operating, we, this commission operates within the context of the law and our ordinance, the law, our ordinance is our law. And the comprehensive plan and then how, with the overall development of McLean and Chisholm, and that's the difficulty we have is squaring all that off. And I'm just, my, I, I would really like to un, I, I really don't think we have a clean zoning package that allows us to make a decision today with, to include how extent, you know, where that three hundred and fifty foot line sits, so.
Well, I want to talk about Mr. Freeze's concern, because what we're, think about this as two tracts of land. We've got Track One, which is generally, general business zoning district. It's Lot One of his request. Track Two is a residential component. So you've got two tracts of land, a plan development district, and there's an envelope, and we stick these inside the envelope. And inside that envelope, I've recommended for Track Two, which is the residential track, that he be able to have the equivalent of agricultural zoning, because that's what the comp plan recommends. And that, that zoning foundation inside the envelope requires a three hundred foot front, but in order to get him a hundred and fifty foot front, we have to reduce that inside the envelope in Track Two. That's the only change. Everything else stays basically SF two point five standards. That's the first thing. And then on the general. And then on the general, and I'm gonna say to Mark, that with this concept, you actually have a pretty clean recommendation. I've recommended approval of the residential, subject to making it the equivalent of ag, but reducing the front, that's required in the P D. That it's not ag zoning, it's P D zoning, that looks like ag, but it has only a hundred and fifty foot front. And then general business, I think if you were to say either approval, subject to remaining within the, the legal description of the current G B, which we don't, I, the legal description, I've sent you a copy of, out of the ordinance, and it says that it's three hundred and fifty feet from the center line of two oh five. Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, the center line of two oh five is changing. It's either coming closer to his property, which makes the distance more, or it's moving away, it's moving to the other side of the street. I haven't taken the time to make that calculation yet, because what I've recommended is that if you say yes to allowing him to have, as, in tract one, as part of his planned development district, this mini warehouse, that it has to be no, it can't go outside the current boundaries of the G B district. And what I've asked for is that he hires somebody to prove where that three hundred and fifty foot line goes today, from the center line of two oh five. And that becomes the place on the, in the ground. And if the, if the commission's desire is to bifurcate the, the recommendation, for instance, you think it's okay to approve the lots with a reduced frontage, tract one? You can do that, and you can say, on the, on tract, I mean, on tract two is the residential, on tract one, we don't agree with the change in zoning, and so the residential component is only on tract two, which is where the S F two-point-five is today, it's clean. And you can make that cut, and you can take action today if you don't wanna approve the mini warehouse, but you do wanna approve the single family. You can do that, and, and it goes to the council, it's clean recommendation, and I can write an ordinance that makes that happen.
But how, but, but all of, all of what you say, how does that take away the public opposition to the mini warehouse?
The mini warehouse, you, you say no to it. I recommend approval of a planned development district to allow for tract two to have basically agricultural zoning development standards, subject to a reduction in the required three hundred foot street frontage to one hundred and fifty feet, and deny the request for a, uh, an additional use in the general business zoning district. And that's it. That, that kills it at this, he can still appeal that.
Oh, I know, I know.
But, but that, if you, if you get the other commissioners to agree with that approach, then we take forward the residential, and, and his application will go forward. But the council pretty much relies on you to make recommendations that, and they mostly go with your recommendations, that are consistent with reality. And so if you recommended approval on, on residential and disapproval on mini warehouse, at the end of the day, they'd get approval of residential and denial of the, of the mini warehouse, that would put it back into G B. He has not made application under G B for that. It would allow him to come back with an S U P application for a mini warehouse. Separate act, completely separate document, different process, new application.
And so we, so we would go through all this whole thing again with public opposition to the mini warehouse?
Yes, you would.
So why can't we just either decide tonight what to do with it and move on?
Well, I think that is a really good question. And I'll tell you why we can't do that. Because we advertise a consideration of a request for a change in zoning, and when that request comes in, whatever the rules are that are in effect, in effect on that day, are the rules that apply throughout the tendency of the application. So if you were to say, I wanna, I wanna take mini warehouse out of the zoning ordinance, section seventeen of three-point-two, and out of three-point-one, which is where it says, mini warehouse is allowed in G B, C B, L I, and some other things. You know, but all subject to an S U P, which means it's an additional zoning. We don't have the authority to do that today. We'd have to come back and do advertising and, and be ready to amend the zoning ordinance. Not with the addition of additional uses on a piece of property, but the removal of uses that are currently in the code.
What, what if, what if one of the commissioners just made a motion to deny the application? I mean, that would be it, right?
Then they can appeal that, that-
And they can appeal that to the city council, or the board of justices, right? But then we wouldn't have to do all this other stuff that you just said, isn't that correct?
They have the right to appeal your decision, whether it's-
I know that, I know that, I know that. That's, that's not a problem.
Okay.
I'm just trying to move us along-
I know.
And, and take care of the business we have at hand.
Yes, Mr. Rhodey, and I agree, that the commission can make a recommendation for denial. And I think that that's fully in your purview, and if that's where you're going, you should do that. Take it to city council. As I've said before, the council really relies on your vetting of these applications so that they can make a decision that doesn't have to go through all the same kind of iterations, but they do have public hearings, they do provide opportunities for Mr. Webb to make his presentation, and at the end of the day, they may say, we agree with the plan commission.
I, I think we've, um, pretty much talked this out at this point. Anybody disagree? Okay.
So, let's say that you do go from the five acres down to the S F two-point-five. Is your intent to, to subdivide this, so that if this were to move forward, a plat ever come forward, that we would see this, this, two and a half acre lots?
No.
One acre lots?
I, I would, I would keep it showing as five acre as the concept plan shows. Um, like I said, I, I thought I've read the conference plan very well many times, and the citizens overwhelmingly said they want a rural country residential lots, and I thought I'm providing that, and I'm trying to.
I don't think anybody disagrees with the residential part. It's the, obviously, without stating the obvious here, this is really about the commercial. And I think if the, given there's existing G B zoning, if your commercial concept fills within that existing three hundred and fifty foot line, then that would be a completely different discussion. But, uh, the, I'm gonna go back to the concept plan we have in front of us, the modifications suggested by Mr. Coker to make it all fit. And then what this additional discussion we've had leaves me, we don't have a clean, I still believe we don't have a clean zoning recommendation. And, and this is philosophically. Once something is, um, it's almost impossible to change. It can be changed, but it's difficult. That's, we, we just have the last discussion with Mr. Webb. I mean, that was part of it, is change from one P D zone to a new P D zone, that's it. So, and, and zoning gives, there's a lot of discretion given to the city concerning the overall health and welfare and design of the city. So the legislature has made it very clear. That's, it's, plating is more difficult, but in the case of zoning, it's a lot of discretion given to the city, and we're trying to, I think what we're trying to do is figure out how to make everybody come together, so it's a, create as much of a win-win as possible. But, um, if, that's why I was asking, if there's no, if you don't intend to withdraw, reconsider, and we have this other option, then I'm gonna leave that to the commission now to make their decision. Do you have, do you have another question? So you wanna make a, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Consider, uh, in relation to the matter at hand, uh, I make a motion to recommend, uh, the city council deny the applicant's request to change from S F two-point-five to a planned development with four, five acre lots.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Does everybody understand, ready to prepare any further discussion? Okay, go ahead. Do the same thing, go ahead and do a Rockwell vote, so you, yes?
Yes.
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 All right, so that unanimous?
Sure.
Same question as last time, with or without prejudice?
Uh, without. All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to item six dot three. Consider the approval of preliminary plat for seventy-three point nine-two-two acres of land for the development of three hundred and twenty-one lots in residential subdivision, submitted by Tellus Mann LLC. The property is located at the intersection of Mann Road and FM five forty-eight Kaufman County, McLendon-Chisholm ETJ, uh, the Kaufman County CAD, P I D is eleven, zero, one-one, zero-three-zero, one-zero-nine, eight-four, and one-one, zero-two-nine. Mr. Coker, step report, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is phase two of the Maraki subdivision, which is in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. I want to remind you that we have only three options in consideration of plats. Option one is approval, option two is approval with conditions, and option three is disapproval. If you approve with conditions, you must be specific about the conditions that they are to comply with, as they are consistent or inconsistent with the subdivision regulations. And if you recommend disapproval, the same standards apply. You have to specify why they fail to comply with the subdivision standards as adopted. Now, we have an interlocal agreement, I included it in the package for your consideration, with the county, with Kaufman County. Our subdivision rules apply, there are a lot of moving parts that, that they have control over, for instance, onsite sanitary sewer, culverts, those kinds of things, they're responsible for. But subdivision rules and the additional language that's in the back of that I L A are things that we have to comply with. This application complies with our subdivision regulations and the requirements of Kaufman County. And we've recommended approval with no conditions.
All right. See the representatives here, sir? Do you wish to make an address to the commission?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Justin Craig, here representing the Tellus Group, uh, where the applicants saw on this preliminary plat. Um, I think Mike has done a good job of representing this. Uh, this plat is consistent with the previous plat, you know, the design of the previous plat that was approved, uh, by the commission here a little over a month ago. Um, consistent with that, the, um, uh, the collector widths, the paving widths, all of that is, um, the same, and continues that design that was, um, put forward before you in that meeting. So I'm here to answer any other questions or concerns that you may have.
Commission, any, any questions? Mr. Freeze, sir?
Yes, sir.
Good, good, good. Um, I only have one, is where are you in achieving an agreement we talked about at the last time? Was the, uh, with the city over, uh, Fire Protection Emergency Services?
Uh, we met with the fire chief just before city council. Um, we went to city council on the preliminary plat that was, uh, approved, and so he gave me his sort of wish list of everything that we need to consider. We've also got, uh, previous examples, and so internally, we're reviewing what, um, deal points we wanna present to the fire chief for his consideration, and plan to do that before we go to council on the fourteenth, assuming, uh, this commission recommends approval.
So, okay, so you're gonna, you're, you are planning on addressing the commission, or the city council on the fourteenth?
Correct.
For an agreement?
Well, not with the agreement, but I will, we plan to meet with the fire chief to continue those discussions. And then my understanding is that we would be processing a, um, uh, fire services agreement that would need to go, I think through you guys, and then through, um, or no, just directly to the city council.
Just directly to council.
You get saved on that one.
Sorry. Um, okay, and any further comments relative to this development?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. So I'll entertain a, sir-
Mr. Treby, before you entertain a motion, I want to tell you that I did talk to the chief about the fire services agreement, and he is very pleased with the position that the Maraki Tellus Group has taken, and it looks to us like it's gonna be a very positive result.
Good deal. Um, how's your water down there? Just curious, what's the, what's the plan on water? I know, this, this-
I just, just curious, it has nothing to do with the consideration of the-
Yeah, so, uh, we did, we were able to come to agreement with High Point, who had the C Z N down there. We were working through the decertification process, and after striking the deal with them, um, we pulled our decertification, so we, we are moving forward with High Point on our, um, water infrastructure that we'll need to build in partnership with them to provide water for the site.
Yeah, that's, I, we always assume, although is, for fire certification, do we, is that Kaufman County, or is that us? It's both? Do we, what? We, the city, I guess, it's. Mm-hmm. And that includes, I'm thinking, fire marshal and certification of the dwellings, et cetera? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gary, see, now, I'm asleep. Thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to, uh, first time we've done this. Uh, item seven, uh, just opportunity for the individual commissioners, if you have any announcements, reports you wanna make. I'll go first. I received the letter, actually came in, I received it today, dated October seventeenth. Uh, I'll pass this to the city secretary, uh, which I think has already been announced, but a, uh, Rockwell County and Texod are conducting a public meeting, both in person and virtual options, for the Rockwell County Outer Loop Project feasibility study is being conducted for approximately a fourteen-point-four new roadway from FM two, twenty-seven fifty-five to S, uh, State Highway two oh five in Rockwell County. The study evaluates alternatives within and near the cities of Roy, of Fay, Roy City and McLendon-Chisholm, and Rockwell through Rockwell County. The purpose of the meeting is to present the proposed alternative recommendations for, for further study and receive public feedback. Uh, the first in-person meeting will be held November ninth. Uh, that's November ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Rockwell County Courthouse in Liberty Hall, uh, which is one-one-one East Yellow Jacket. Can't miss it, big building, real big building. Um, and the virtual public hearing will begin on Thursday, November ninth, at five-thirty, and remain online, there's a URL, secretary, city secretary can provide that, and that allows for those that can't attend the, uh, live meeting or in-person meeting to provide comments. My experience with this has been, once these, this public hearing, this will be the last time, really, for the public to make comment as individuals. After that, it will be, uh, the city's, or any county, will be the, uh, predominant input to Texod. Am I that right, Mr. Coker? Okay. So I have any- That's all I have, anybody else? So wish to add. To my alternates, thank you for being here tonight. Any, any comments? Tom? Good? Okay, sir?
I would, I would just like to tell Mr. Webb that I understand the, the need for a, a commercial enterprise and in a, but I also understand the need that we need to work with the citizens that are around that. We've had cases before where a developer has come before us, and we've had the public opposition, the two have got together and have worked out something that is acceptable to both. I just encourage you to maybe use that avenue, but you, yes?
Thank you. I, I did want to point out, I thought I was picking the right spot, based off of the zoning map, based off of recommendations I got, but also because that, that property is on Lake Road, and the next seven properties out of the next nine all have metal buildings on them already. So it's just particular, it's a little odd to me that they're in such opposition against metal buildings going in on my lot when they have them. That, that seven out of the nine properties adjacent to mine all have metal buildings on them. The one across the street has one that's nearly 6,000 square feet. None of mine would be that size, they would be smaller, so.
Yeah, I think their opposition was the 300 units more so than the metal.
The, the road frontage would be, again, the same size, no matter how many units are behind it. And so with the wall and, and the landscaping, you, you really don't see the depth of that lot. And I just wanted to point out, as I have the mic, I guess for a second, was, you know, that lot for any other general business use without 205 frontage is very unusable for most businesses. You're not gonna get a boutique store, you're not gonna get a restaurant to take four or five acres off of Lake Road. But that is zoned for general business use, and I bought it for a general business use that I thought could be tucked away behind 205, behind those front commercial properties with proper screening from the residential, and work for everybody's benefit. It would produce extreme amount of tax revenue for the city. The current tax revenue on that property is about $300 a year. My estimations would have been around $100,000 to $150,000 a year for that one property's tax revenues. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other comments? So, have a, a, any concern, item eight, any considerations for future meetings? Council members, I mean commissioners? I've been hanging around city council too much. No? I'll leave that to the members of the commission. We are looking at November 21st, which would be Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. You're here. You're here. You're here. I'm gonna be here. Yeah. You're gonna be, it's okay. Tom, I don't know if you're gonna be here then or not. 21st of Thanksgiving, 21st of November? Yeah, okay, so we'll have quorum, so we'll continue with that meeting. Okay. All right. That'll take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All right. All in, all in favor? Good, we're adjourned. 350 feet.